Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, August 15th. Tonight, the agenda, just a reminder, a recording device will be used during the meeting. We're going to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public, do we have any public comment for agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the police accommodation, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief.
My name is Markosi. I'm the police chief of East Brandywine Township. I'm very honored tonight. We're making two presentations, one to Officer Christopher Fox. He's receiving a unit accommodation, and we are announcing tonight the promotion of Corporal Juan Lemus to the rank of sergeant. So we're going to ask Chris coming up.
Come on up, Lee. Come on up, buddy.
Stand right here. Stand right there, Lee. Good. Turn that way down. There you go. Shortly after midnight on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024, Officer Christopher Fox of the East Brandywine Township Police Department observed a Green Ford Expedition traveling eastbound in the 1,200 block of Horseshoe Pike. The vehicle exhibited equipment violations, and Officer Fox initiated a traffic stop. Officer Fox conducted a records check prior to approaching the vehicle and learned that the registered female owner was wanted by Lancaster County law enforcement on multiple criminal drug warrants. Sergeant Mark Twiddell and Officer John Hayes responded to assist. Officer Fox confirmed that the female driver was wanted by Lancaster County. She was taken into custody, and an additional records check was conducted on both a male and female passenger. The male was wanted by Lancaster County law enforcement on a simple assault warrant. He also was taken into custody. A search incident to the arrest of the female driver resulted in nine clear glassine bags with suspected heroin labeled Carlito's Way. A consent search conducted on the impounded vehicle revealed a black bookbag containing 89 clear glassine bags with suspected heroin labeled True Religion. Numerous needles and other drug paraphernalia were recovered from the female suspect and the black bag. Lab testing of the drugs resulted in positive findings for heroin. The female suspect has been charged with various drug offenses, including possession with the intent to deliver. Officer Fox is recognized for his arrest of two wanted felons and for his efforts to remove dangerous illegal drugs off the streets of East Brandywine Township. Officer Fox is hereby commended for an exemplary job well done. Awarded this 15th day of August 2024, East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
And now I'd like to request Corporal Juan Lemus to come forward. His daughter Lori is going to assist him. Would you like to hold the violence for your father? Juan placed right hand and left hand. Juan was hired by the police department in December of 2014 as a part-time officer. He became a full-time officer in June of 2015. He's a little over nine and a half years of service with us. He was promoted to corporal in March of 2022. He is our police depart, one of our police department's firearms instructors for handgun, shotgun, and rifle. He is a member of the Chester County Drug Task Force, and he is the assistant team leader of the 27 agency Chester County Regional Emergency Response Team. He has received one unit citation and one merit citation, and he has numerous other thank yous, accolades, and recognition letters from residents and other law enforcement agencies. I'm now going to ask Chairman of the Board of Supervisors Kyle Scrubner to administer his oath of office.
I state your name.
I, Juan Lemus.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the laws and the ordinances of the township of East Brandywine, and the law enforcement code of ethics, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my, I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as police sergeant with fidelity to the best of my ability. I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration of a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national orientation, ancestry, handicap, or disability. If so, state I do.
I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the police department and all the guests that came. You're feel, feel free to walk out at your leisure. There's no sense in staying in here for this. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Tom for the conditional use hearing.
A continued hearing on the application of Three Creeks LLC. They filed a conditional use application for the property at 2069 Bonsville Road. It's a proposed traditional neighborhood development. The hearing was last convened on July 18th, 2024, and it was continued on the record until this evening. The applicant has requested that the hearing be continued again until September 19th, 2024. Their motion by the board to continue the hearing until September 19th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to continue the conditional use hearing to September 19th, 2024.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Therefore, the hearing will be continued until Thursday, September 19th, 2024, to begin after the Board of Supervisors' public meeting, which commences at 6:30 PM. There will be no further advertisement, posting, or notification of a continued hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, we're going to go into meaning, minutes of the previous meeting for the approval of the August 1st, 2024 Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the August 1st, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I had a moment to look at the report for the treasurers. Anybody else need any minute?
No, I looked it over, too, and I don't have any questions.
Okay. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report, authorize, authorize the payment of bills, and approve the payroll.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Luke.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Township staff have recently completed a transition to, from our traditional analog voice phones routed through a private branch exchange, or PBX, to a cloud-based voice-over-internet protocol service. Staff anticipates a number of positive benefits, including the monthly costs of consolidated analog, voice, broadband, and VoIP are projected to be less than current costs. Number two, the new system will be more resilient to the risk of local equipment failure due to electrical surges as the exchange service is now cloud-based. Number three, the service can more easily facilitate remote work should the need arise. And four, the system offers many more features, including the ability to use the PC in this meeting hall as a phone for remote participation in meetings without using additional software such as Zoom. The project required considerable planning and effort to implement over many months. I, the, the list of people to thank is too long, so I will make a general statement. I'd like to thank the entire township team for their patience and work over these many months to implement the new system. When I focus on upcoming events before the next PM session of the Board of Supervisors, this Friday, August 16th, at dusk, Parks and Recreation will be hosting the final free movie in the park featuring the children's animated film Trolls Band Together. I'd like to thank the volunteers of Parks and Recreation for hosting another excellent season of three movies and three concerts in the park. On Sept, on Sunday, September 15th, the Historical Commission will present the first of three fall speakers with the presentation Self-Help Through Self-Work about the history of the Downingtown Industrial and Agricultural School, once located here in East Brandywine Township. The Downingtown Industrial and Agricultural School was a school for African-Americans where they learned agriculture, mechanical trades, domestic arts, reading, writing, and mathematics for almost 90 years between 1904 and 1993. I reserve the balance of my comments for agenda items later in the meeting. Respectfully submitted, Luke Revan, Township Manager.
Thank you. For the building inspector's report, there was fees collected of $29,907.45. Total permits issued was 26 and six zoning permits issued. I'll go ahead and turn it over to the roadmaster now.
I can now prepare a report for this evening.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Chief once again.
The police report for the month of July 2024. Police Department recorded 2,390 incidents, dropped 261 investigations, there were eight criminal arrests, two summary arrests, five warrant arrests, pre-juvenile petitions. Officers investigated six traffic accidents, issued 137 traffic citations. Traffic rulings issued. Officer logged 9,325. Training completed this past month. The entire police department completed our MOPAC required defensive tactics training. No correspondence attached to your package or the investigation of the officer.
Thank you. Chief, for the fire department, if you would mind.
Thank you very much. The East Brandywine Fire Company reported fourth of the month of July. We responded to a total of 111 incidents for the month. Seventy-five were fire-related, 35 were metalwork-related. Under 39 fire calls, 21 metalwork calls in East Brandywine Township. Fire calls, 15 metalwork calls in West Brandywine Township, and two fire calls in Upper Houston. Went to a variety of different utility companies, territories, once, and went to West Brandywine Township. Had an average number of 15 people per call, major incident light, 111, bunch of fuel, West Brandywine Township fuel for 10. Fire damage, injuries, or fatalities were involved. We had three train sessions, and averaged 24 people. All folders were auto-hopped, picked out, restored, and based on the data. Thirty, over 36 calls were out here. That's why they're firing.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have, make us, make this with us tonight? Okay. All right, so we're going to go ahead, and I want to turn it over to Luke for the contract award for, for the municipal solid waste.
Thank you. On August 2nd, township staff hosted a sealed bid opening for proposals to collect curbside trash and recycling for a period beginning January 1st, 2025. Staff received correspondence from five bidders and complete bids from three. The three parties who committed, submitted complete bids were AJ Blazinski, Whitetail Disposal, and Solid Waste Services, doing business as JP Mascaro. Correspondence from both Waste Management and Republic Services indicated that they declined to bid citing a lack of automation-ready solid waste containers. In plain English, this means that the bidders could not serve our community due to the lack of trash carts. Our residents instead use containers of their choice. A second concern raised by those not bidding was about the lack of option for collection on more than one day of the week. The apparent low bidder was our incumbent provider, AJ Blazinski. Their bid was for $2,832,598 for service in the years 2025, 2026, and 2027. AJ Blazinski declined to bid on the option of supplying trash carts for all stops. No change to the collection date, Tuesday, is proposed. Staff has completed our review of the bid materials and is prepared to recommend the board authorize the township manager and township solicitor to develop and execute a contract for the service based on the bid materials received.
I have a question. Luke, on the, I know it's a three-year contract, I believe.
It is a three-year contract with options for year four and five.
Are those options, then, at that price going to be included in the final contract, or do they get to rebid for year four and five?
No, so the, the, the apparent low bidder was determined by the sum of the three guaranteed contract years, one through three. Years four and five are options that the township may exercise to extend the service. The price quoted is for those years. So there would be no, there, there, the only adjustment to that price would be the additional houses that were built in the community.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Luke, you might as well keep going.
Well, may I? We have a motion on this.
And I would just make it clear in the motion that you're forwarding the contract to AJ to bid for a three-year. I'll be executing. A question on it? Sure. Wouldn't we want to include the year four and five as option years in the motion, too? That all depends, we don't know at this time whether we're going to take that. I understand that, but if we want to take it, I don't want, I want to lock the price in today, not three years from now. Who knows what fuel might cost labor.
I'm, I'm sorry, I would, I welcome your comment, but would you please use the microphone at the front so that every, we can get a name and hear your voice for the minutes?
My name is Andrew Casey. I'm from AJ Blazinski. So the, the price for year four and five are per the contract, what's in there, there is a set rate for them. And when, after three years, it's your option if you want to take that, and you can tell us. That price is set. It is already in there as part of the contract.
Owe to amend the motion to include that the contract will include the four and five-year options at the price. So moved. Questions?
I don't.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Luke, you can continue now again on the.
All right, so the next agenda item is, is actually a required hearing on a, on a potential open space acquisition. And so if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, a slight deviation from the speaker indicated on the agenda, I'd like Mr. Estey to assist me with this.
Hi, Mr. Revan and Chairman. You're required under the Open Space Lands Acquisition and Preservation Act to conduct an informal hearing. Then you propose to require open space interest, including the fee acquisition of any property for open space purposes. Purpose of the hearing is to disclose the open space interest to be taken, in other words, what the township proposes to purchase. Second reason is to disclose the proposed open space benefits that will be acquired. And the third is to provide an opportunity for affected persons or other municipalities to present evidence regarding the proposed act acquisition. Township proposes to purchase in fee three properties owned by the estate of William F. McQueen. Properties are located on the east side of Creek Road with postal addresses of 255, 299, and 301 Creek Road, also known as Chester County UPI numbers 30-6-77, 30-6-78, and 30-6-79, totaling approximately 14.6 acres. Properties are adjacent to the east branch of the Brandywine Creek. Proposed open space benefits are protection and conservation of riparian corridor and floodplain areas and preservation of the scenic use shed of the Brandywine Creek. Township proposes to pay the seller $550,000 for the purchase of the property, which will come out of the open space fund. The township will place a conservation easement on the properties, and in conjunction with natural lands, will grants to cover the cost of purchasing properties and also doing certain studies related to the purchase. Owe to open the floor for the presentation, relevant evidence, or public comment to resume.
Okay, you've heard the solicitor, the floor is open. Do I have anybody?
Saying none, I previously provided to the board a proposed motion. I can read that if you wish, or if you can.
Continue, please.
Sure. Motion to authorize the expenditure of $550,000 from the township open space fund to purchase the McQueen properties and the expenditure of additional amounts from the open space fund as necessary to obtain an environmental assessment, obtain an updated appraisal, obtain a title report, title insurance, and survey, pay consultant legal fees, and pay ancillary expenses necessary for the acquisition of the properties. And further move to authorize the township manager to execute on behalf of the township an agreement of sale satisfactory to the township solicitor, purchase of the properties of the estate of William F. McQueen, 255, 299, and 301 Creek Road, for a total purchase price of $550,000. Authorize the township manager, secretary, treasurer, and solicitor, township open space committee, and the township agent and consultants to do all things necessary to acquire and complete settlement on the properties.
President, you want to make the motion to ensure the open space plea is on?
Well, yeah, I'll make a motion to, to approve the motion that was just read by Tom Estey. Do I get a second?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. All right, Trails presentation, Mr. Waggoner here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Waggoner, and I am the Trails Committee Member, Committee Manager. I'm here with a couple colleagues tonight. During some of our recent conversations in the Trail Committee, we were able to look at new possibilities, new opportunities for the township to expand our east-to-west trail. Well, that would be the trail that's going from the Struble Trail all the way up to West Brandywine, and then went on its way to Hibernia. As part of this project, as you know, we've already done multiple stripings. We have connections from our community park now to Wildfire Thorn, which then goes across a crossing into Maple View, which then goes across 322 to Bonsville, and then there's a big loop goes around Apple Cross. Within our community park and Apple Cross, we have roughly a five-mile connection now that people can walk from point A to point B, connecting people amongst our community to our park and to other locations. So tonight's presentation really is about going the other way now, starting our community park and working towards the Struble Trail. So in your package, and hopefully Lisa put this out, and unless you need me to put this underneath the microscope, Luke?
If you'll give me a moment, you can, you may do so.
Okay. Blow that up a little bit, Luke?
The text, you got to push the camera a little closer. Not that kind of technology. There we go.
Are we getting new technology?
That's like a $40 Amazon camera.
Oh, okay. Technology sound like the needle. So this is the first piece of the project. This is an existing easement that we already own. Corner Ketchelen Del Road is here, Rolling Glen is here, and this is the gravel driveway that, that services five, four houses along it. There was already a path, or, excuse me, there's already an easement that was given to the township by this development. It's roughly 700, 700 linear feet long by roughly 15 to 20 feet. While I don't have the correct measurements, I don't have the subdivision for that. But this is just to show that we already have something in place that we can build upon. And what I'd like to do tonight is to see the supervisor's appetite to maybe start to challenge or to, or to take this on as a challenge, to see if we can get this built. This is already being used, and there's already a warm path by kids in the neighborhood to go to the, to the, to the grade school, which is here. They're already, they're already traversing through here through the woods to get it. So this is a logical connection to start. And with that, I had the opportunity to talk with Nate, our township engineer, who I know professionally, and we came up with an idea that might be cost-saving, or at least in the beginning. And that was to maybe to put together a meeting, township staff, people who, you know, will write the check, to go out there and to see if there's a way that we can do it easier. Is there a way that Matt and his crew could do it? Is there a way we can minimize some of the design and documentation expenses by just going out there, putting our heads together, and coming up with maybe a better solution than, than running the gamut of a design and documentation project? So that's the first piece. The second piece would then be, and this is where I'm going to probably throw Carl under the bus. Carl and I spoke two months ago about this. This is the easement that we would need to go through the elementary school to get to our community park. And it's a long area that needs to go along the property line because one of the requirements that the schools have nowadays is not to have trails in close proximity to the kids. There's, there's a really big security concern when it comes to that. So this is probably the best solution. Now, talking with Carl, Carl's assured me that he has talked with the township because he's got their, or, excuse me, the school board, because he's got their ear, and there's a great possibility that we can get this done. Maybe even to a point where the school district might even do it for us. Funding for it would have to come up from maybe open space, or if they even charge us at all. I do know, because my company does work for the school district, that they have needs. And alls I would ask for this is, maybe we can expedite those needs so we can get what we need, and then move forward. So I leave it up to you guys just to, as a idea, as a next step, because we plan to continue our way to the Struble Trail.
Mr. Chairman, may I add a friendly additional comment on that? The proposal this evening is entirely consistent with the east-west gateway plan that a Board of Supervisors adopted in about 2018.
Correct.
Yeah, so this is, this is consistent with prior planning exercises.
As far as part one, with getting staff started on this with you, I, I have no problem. I don't know if the board, the rest of the board has a problem with it, but I'm, I'm on with that. And then obviously you've had dialogue with, with Carl on, on the school board.
Correct.
And maybe it would be prudent at this point to try and put pen to paper on that and see if we can't find out if there is anything that, that's held back on their end.
Would, would not be an issue.
And there are a lot of wheels in motion. Let me just. Let me just, I'm not on the school board anymore. I used to be on the school board. But this came up when I was on the school board, and in fact, it came up to my committee on the school board. And you are absolutely right, the original proposal made by the township violated several security rules around the time when the security became so important. We're talking 10 years ago about right now, so.
Do you have more now?
The, there's been ongoing discussions recently with the school district administrative staff, primarily the facilities department. We've had meetings, and their ask from us was to include the school grounds and some other minor grounds, which I can't remember offhand, in a letter to Aqua, allowing Aqua to increase their franchise area so the school could get public water.
Correct.
We have done that.
Perfect.
We submitted the letter, we made a couple changes based on the recommendations of Aqua's consultant, so that's in process, so that is a huge step. Once it is included, once that school property is included in the franchise area, I believe the school district is going to, and I'm sure you know this too, is going to move the school district relatively rapidly in adding on to Brandywine Wells.
Correct.
The carrot they gave us to include them in the franchise area was they were amenable to a trail as long as it met security clearance, and you can't get much further away from the school.
They can't.
So you put a design out that, who knows what their consultant will say, because there is still some closeness to the school, but you can't go any further. So there's a lot of wheels in motion, so hopefully in the next, everything works slow in government, but hopefully in the next three to six months, steps can be taken to get that in there. And I believe the discussion, Luke, you can, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but they were willing to give us that easement for nothing.
That's even better.
Right, so I don't believe there'll be a cost in the easement.
Okay.
The only thoughts that come to my mind are, what easements do we have east of Corner Catch Road? Because what I'm seeing is a trail to nowhere.
We have easement across Corner Catch Lindell Road through the next driveway that goes into an emergency access easement that goes to...
Pankos Lane, is it, Luke?
Pankos?
Could you bring up the, can you bring up the east-west plan?
Yeah, so immediately across Corner Catch is an emergency access easement across Corner Catch. An emergency access easement is not a trail easement, but there is an existing easement of some sort there. And then the master plan called for a share-the-road model through the Echo Dell Development.
Correct.
Sorry, the reason nothing is happening is because I'm using the wrong keyboard. Adopted in March of 2018, it is a, it breaks up a much longer ambitious goal of connecting the Struble Trail at the eastern end of our community to the Hibernia Park in West Brandywine Township. It accomplishes this goal by breaking segments into bite-sized pieces and trying to connect existing segments to segments. So everything we add will terminate at a dead end until it's done. So, but the important detail by way of setting priorities that at least one end dovetails with an existing trail network.
Yeah, I was just curious what was in place downstream.
We're only missing small pieces along Hopewell Road. We have access through Batton Drive, we have access through the National Land Trust, we have access along the old Tisha property, which connects to the Gettigan property, which they've already built. We have access through Deja Vu, that's only the name of the house, but then we also have access through the farm with, the old Whittaker Farm. So we have easement all the way down to 282.
Yeah, I see this, and I see this.
There was only a couple sections that we actually need, and a couple of those sections, some of those houses are for sale, and that's where one of our partners was trying to get an easement before that end or after that, if they came in. So there's, we have the majority of it eased out, we'll say.
So if I may, just spend a moment on what is projected. These are segments of the trail as contemplated. The yellow is existing segments, the orange is proposed. So what we've heard presented is a slight variation of four and five, as shown on this map. The alignment is not precisely the same, but it is conceptually four and five. And it would, on its west end, dovetail with the existing trail network in the east Brandywine Township Community Park. The east end would be hanging.
This isn't in place. Number three's not in place.
Three is the emergency access easement.
Okay.
Which is, and two is the share-of-the-road model.
Yeah, along Pankos Lane, and it brings you back up onto Hopewell.
And those are those three lots that we have a problem with.
Coming to this section over here where it goes down into the cemetery. So you're coming down here and you're going into the cemetery. Where is it going from there?
Initially, we were supposed to go down Batton Lane, and then you see that access easement through there. We were going to connect through there to the National Land Trust. But Luke came up with a good solution, because we got pushback from the people who were living in that neighborhood, that it might be better to go along the frontage of Hopewell Road in the cemetery, because the Batton Drive residents had a very large right-of-way between edge of road and the vinyl fence that's there. So it was deemed a little bit more accessible to go that way than to go through the neighborhood. I personally wouldn't have a problem going through the neighborhood, because we maintain those roads. You know, our tax dollars pay for this, so an on-road would not be a problem. We did it at Wildfire, and there hasn't seemed to be an issue with that. Again, that's going through a neighborhood. So we're on our way. And really, what we just asked for is support of the township as we move forward, because I think this is a very good model that we could use as we move forward. You know?
Okay.
Yeah, I just was trying to get up to speed on what's in place, what's not in place.
What have you talked about? I have a whole book about this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next, we're going to turn it over to the Mapleview HOA for parking issues.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Somil Agarwal. Currently, I'm serving on Mapleview HOA Board, and we are having few parking issues, so Kristen is a representative for our community will be talking to you.
I want to start by thanking all for allowing us the opportunity to speak today on the Mapleview community's parking request to expand Glory Maple Lane to add much-needed designated parallel parking spaces. As Somil mentioned, my name is Kristen Mohler. I'm a first-time home buyer and new resident of Mapleview Community in the east Brandywine Township as of January of this year. I'm a phase-three resident on Glory Maple Lane. I understand that compromises and decisions were made back in January 2022 due to supply chain issues and at a time when the phase-three houses were just grass lots with a state sign. But today, I stand here in front of my local government to ask for your support and assistance in working together to find a solution to the apparent parking issues that the east Brandywine Township's newest residents, myself included, are facing every day. Today, there are currently zero parking spaces for the 35 townhomes in phase-three of the Ryan Homes Mapleview Community in the east Brandywine Township. However, I'm told two parking spaces will be added per the amended plans on the small phase-three road that runs parallel to North Grothriesville Road called Scarlet Maple in the next month or so, but as of yet, they are not available. I'm also a new mom of a nine-month-old who is hopefully sleeping right now. His first birthday is right around the corner, and you can imagine my fear of trying to invite even just one guest to celebrate his first birthday, because there is no parking. Our community will have more instances of events just like this. We're going to have birthday parties, we're going to have times when people need to show up, family dinners, really a number of things that could happen, especially open houses. I really could go on with this list. But for me, when I decided, and my husband decided, to purchase our new build, the Ryan Homes Townhomes in the Mapleview Community of the east Brandywine Township, one of the questions I was concerned with and distinctly asked about was parking on Glory Maple Lane. And I was directly advised by the sales representative that the lot I selected on Glory Maple Lane would allow ample street parking on both sides of Glory Maple Lane. So you can imagine my surprise and subsequent frustration of now having to worry about just inviting one guest, especially somebody like my mom or my grandmother, to come help me with my child, after months of moving in and learning that Glory Maple Lane, you're not allowed to park on. So the petition put forward today, and the one reason that I really wanted to stand in front of you and tell my story and also introduce myself as a new resident of east Brandywine Township, is because I'm asking for your support to find a solution to add some kind of guest-dedicated parking spaces along Glory Maple Lane. I'll be the first to admit, I'm not a design engineer, not a construction manager or a roadmaster. I personally don't have the expertise to determine which parking solution put forward is most optimal to meet the needs of our community while ensuring safety, snow removal needs, impervious land considerations, et cetera. I understand that all of those things must be considered. However, I believe that by coming to you all today, that we can find a solution that enhances the overall livability of the community by working together with you, our HOA Board, the roadmaster, the developers' design engineers, on an area that is still actively under construction currently. So, thank you for your time. I really appreciate, greatly appreciate. Any questions I can entertain? We have a few members of our community here as well, specifically really want to speak to on behalf and myself of the phase-three residents affected by the parking issue. So, thank you. We have a few maps, and also submitted, the HOA Board submitted the parking proposal formally to the township.
Anybody else want to add to that? Before you sit down, I have a question. Have you met with the developer?
Our HOA Board has been meeting with the developer. I'm not currently a part of the HOA Board officially, so I cannot speak to that. Would you like to speak with that?
Yeah, we met the developer, and he said that he is not going to provide any parking spots there on the section of the road we are asking him. And there is only two parking spaces, as she said, like on the Scarlet Road, that he said that will be there, and we recently heard that it is also cut off to one, so we just now have one parking space, which is still not there, and maybe in the next month it will come. So what we are really asking is on the Glory Maple Lane, there is a section of the road where there is a possibility to park, provided we may have to cut the road a little bit inside, like a section of the road a little bit inside, so that way it does not obstruct the traffic. And the option, we even asked developer that, first, we want the developer to pay for it if it's possible. If not, then maybe HOA and developer can work together on some, like amount, okay, that's like this much developer is willing to pay, this much HOA is willing to pay. And if that is also not possible, the third possibility may be the HOA has to bear it. But we are looking for the township some guidance on this. Like on HOA, we are not the expert, like developer has been telling us this parking, but we really, as a resident, have been facing these issues. Like even last Saturday, there was a party, and a lot of people parked the car on the Glory Maple Lane, which is eventually going to be dedicated to township. Like township will own that road, I think. The HOA will no more own it, and it is just going to add the issues for everyone.
Do you give a little bit of your feedback?
Sure. So I did visit the community in the area of Scarlet, and I found that each individual unit actually has four parking spaces. There's two, two in the garage, and then two located outside the garage. The driveways were not deep enough in order to double-stack cars within the driveway itself. They were around 30 feet and 24 feet long, and unless you have extremely short cars, then it would be pretty difficult to get two vehicles double-stacked in the driveways. The other thing I looked at, now on the right-hand side, there's an area that's a straightaway that there's a possibility of, right about there, on the right-hand side. That's a fairly straight area, and I believe it looked like you could get seven parking spots by removing the curb and widening the roadway there. I believe you could get seven parking spots in there. I don't have my notes in front of me right now. And then if you go on down the road, I don't recommend putting any parking spots on the curb itself. That's extremely dangerous for people to get their vehicles off of the parking area. And then again, where this dumpster is, it straightens out, that's where all the construction is, the roadway straightens out, and that's another area where you could do the off-street parallel parking, means widening the roadway there. And again, I was just looking at ideas on paper. I did not do any, well, I'm not an engineer, so I would not be able to do any engineering. So that's what I found in that area.
Thank you, Matt. So my recommendation is to have a sit-down with the builder and using some of the information that Matt just gave you guys as pointers to try and work out some type... Here's the thing, we had this meeting, I don't remember how many years ago, it was several years ago, and the original board did not want the parking spaces, the original representatives from Mapleview. And the builder made compromises with them. You can go and look at the meeting minutes on that, if you query that, you'll find it. But again, there's going to be some expenses from the HOA, but if you're in the beginning, now's the time to do it, while you're still in raw earth and you haven't done the final coat of the asphalt. Once that happens, it's going to be, you know, you're going to be going backwards, it's going to be much more expensive. So my recommendation is to start that route, and if you need to get the township involved to help with the engineering, we can't obviously pay for it, but we can help you answer questions here and there as they come up. But that's my recommendation for the immediate future, because once that final phase of asphalt goes on.
Absolutely, and I think we understand that the window for this is narrow, and that's one of the reasons we absolutely wanted and appreciate you putting us on the agenda today. And I think to your point, when this discussion was had back in 2022, there weren't phase-three houses directly impacted by this. So the people making decisions were making decisions based on where they live currently and what they can see. And I think that's why I wanted to really be able to tell my story, because I'm living as one of those impacted residents in an area that has no parking and will continue to have massive parking issues. So I absolutely agree, and I think we can take it back to the developer, but I think understanding, especially from Matt's perspective, that there are opportunities to add parallel parking spaces in a way that does address safety, I think is a huge starting point for us.
Yeah. Yeah.
But based on that meeting 20 months ago, which was the developer and the homeowners' association, phase one and two, came before the supervisors and asked us to amend the phase-three, because it hadn't started yet, and we did, based on recommendations from the HOA. So we're in a pickle now. We can't just undo something approved.
Absolutely, and I understand that. I think the perspective that I would add for your comment there is that from all the meeting minutes that I've gone through, all the inquiries that I've made from the residents that were part of the decision back in 2022, the proposal was initiated to make the change by the developer. And the residents and the HOA Board worked with the developer to find a solution to the developer's proposal that worked for the community. This was not a community-driven change. The community adapted the changes that the developer was making happen, and now we need to adapt and pivot again because of those changes that the developer put forward back in 2022. And I think for me, that is part of a big piece to the story, especially as phase-three residents are coming in and feeling the impacts of the change initiated by the developer back in 2022.
I'm not...
I'm not trying to say I'm on the developer's side, believe you.
No, absolutely. I understand.
The basic change was you did away with the 21 parking lots up where the mailbox was going to be.
Yep.
And it was all different reasons. Really couldn't get the equipment, but you still had supply chain shortages. And substituted 20 in development spaces, so you lost one. So even if you would have built the 21, doesn't solve your problem. So that's where you got to get the engineers.
Absolutely.
Township's input as to what can we possibly do. And missing the builder is a third step.
Absolutely.
And he wants to sell the houses, I mean, you start hanging signs out your window. Parking stinks.
I think people know that the second they pull one.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. Absolutely.
My name is Antoinette Fabrizio. I live at 58 Glory Maple Lane. I was one of the first owners of the development when I sat there for about four or five months before a second homeowner purchased and watched the whole development, you know, over the course of two... I moved in August 13th, 2020. I was here involved with the issues that, you know, Kristen is discussing with you and Sumil. We were, when we talked to developer, and I've talked to Michael and Don personally several times back then and move to present day, we didn't really have a lot of options. I mean, at the same time, they were doing us a favor, if you will. Like legally, it wasn't like they chose to get, to not have the parking spaces along Guthrie'sville, where the mailboxes would have been, because of the supply chain issues and so forth. So we were looking for solutions. Granted, the point's been made that we didn't have the wherewithal to see what Phase Three would look like. It was just dirt and grass to us. But we were looking at maps here with the architecture, you know, people with the developer. I forget the other gentleman's name that was here, but I can remember his face. But we, you know, we were also being pushed, like, well, this is all we can do for you. There was a lot of back and forth, some back and forth within here, some back and forth off the record of what can we do? So the solution was to take those 20 parking spaces, if you will, put them in the perimeter on the private properties, or private roads, it would be Paper Bark and Scarlet, along Glory Maple, which is the public road. You know, we were even getting pushed back from the postmaster of like what could be done, of what's safe for them to do for having their drivers to pull up and get mail and everything. There were so many factors that were evolving. And the whole time, we're being told, well, honestly, we could do what we want, because we're the developer. And legally, it's our choice to do it, you know? So we were trying to make a solution to get some sort of parking. And then being in the Phase Three, because I was the one that brought up, even though it doesn't even affect me, I wouldn't have family probably park at the Guthrie'sville lot when initially it was going to exist anyway, because it's so far from my house at this point. It's all the way down to the other end. I'm over to 322 when you come down the, you know, the hill, basically. They were like, no, we can't do anything there. So we worked with what we got as a community and the HOA at the time, with the wherewithal that we had, you know, limited expertise was available to be able to give some input. But we were at the mercy of the developer and what they were willing to do. So we were basically begging for scraps. Like, what could you do to get some sort of parking? Because I'm telling you, when I moved in and saw the Guthrie'sville lot, and I understood that my street was a public street, I went, would this be a con to move in the Mapleview community, because I knew parking was going to be an issue? I respect the fact that I have a one-car garage, so I have three spaces. If I choose to put junk in my garage instead of a car, that's my problem. I technically have three spaces as it was brought up. But again, any other sort of overflow parking that's a fourth, or in cases of the houses that have the two-car garage on the sides, what do we do? And we cannot park on Glory Maple, because we will be ticketed once that road is dedicated. So with the solution that was proposed here was in, working on Don and working on Michael, like if there was that cutout along that straight run, which would be safe for the postmaster, safe, you know, potentially safe from what I understand what the roadmaster has to worry about with emergency vehicles getting down, the police, the fire department, what have you. It's 25 miles an hour now. We're going to go over the speed tables later, because that's something for a later day, for the speeding. Like, is there a way, again, if that's that pilot parking of those seven issues, it's just that cutout, you're taking the curb. I know we can't make the developer do that. I'm hoping we can maybe get something, like they said, if they're helping us in some way, shape, or form, since that area is not completed, of just not having the curb there, cutting it out, letting those six or seven cars park, you know, bumper to bumper, and at least it doesn't interfere with the flow of Glory Maple for safety and the other factors. And those people, when we have snow plow removal, you got to move your cars, or you're going to be in trouble. Plows have to get in that little section of cutout to get those six or seven cars. So at least it gives something else for the community. Because it was tight to begin with. And like, you know, you know that. You knew that going in, purchasing a home. It was on my con list. I used to live in Upper Euclid, right before living here. I lived there for 15 years. I chose this community for a reason. I wanted to keep my kids in Downey Town Area School District. I love this area. I love going up to Honeybrook and Lancaster. Like, I just love so much about it. And I know other, I have some distant family members and friends that live here. So it was a con that I was willing to compromise. But we lost a parking lot. We lost the lot at Guthrie'sville. It's not the developer's fault, but it's not our fault either. So that's why we're just kind of putting it out there. We didn't have the ability. And we got shut down with ideas of doing the same idea back in 2021 and 2022. We're kind of like, nope, we're not doing that. Nope, we're not doing that. I think the developer wanted to look at the most cost-effective solution for them, which I respect. Why do they want to put more money out to make a change? But I was the one on this podium saying, well, with the supply chain, did you go to another vendor? Can we just stall it and still make it a parking lot? Like, I'm the one asking these questions, and they said they turned over every stone. This is what it is. We're getting rid of the blacktop there. You can't help it. Removing the mailbox is tough. So here we are. That's why we're pleading of a solution and your input and any ideas you could offer to kind of help. So we're not having, you know, you're 25, you're 26, you're 27, so many issues with parking, and we already... It's terrible. It's really terrible.
Well, let's start with our roadmaster's recommendation. You could talk to the developer about that. I think Brian Nagel is who you were talking about that was here.
Yes, yes, that's it. Naples, yes, correct.
Thank you, guys, and obviously...
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
You've got an engineering and legal issue.
Thank you, guys. All right. So now we're going to do, let's see, ordinance is subdivision, there's none, and now you're going to do... Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you again.
Yeah, you have before you proposed Resolution 11 of 2024, which was previously circulated to you. And this has the effect of approving the preliminary land development plan for 525 Reed's Road, subject to several conditions. I'm not going to read the resolution in its entirety. It has some background paragraphs, but I will summarize the conditions of approval. One is that the applicant resolved to the satisfaction of the township engineer, all comments marked pending or outstanding in Penone's correspondence date July 2nd, 2024. Two is the necessity for an approved NPDES permit and general permit or other permit that might be required for the proposed bridge culvert. Three requires that the plan be modified and revised to reduce to the extent feasible the limit of disturbance and tree removal as currently depicted on the revised preliminary plan. Four requires seed mixes and landscaping that are appropriate for the included conditions of the property. Five requires details for the protection of existing trees that are to remain and an accurate count of the number of trees to be removed. Six requires prior to the commencement of land disturbance that the survey monument be placed on the southwestern property corner. And by way of explanation, the neighboring property owner was at the planning commission and expressed concern about the property line and a desire to have this marked before. Seven requires a detailed sequence of construction, including culvert construction staging, tree protection measures, E and S controls, driveway construction, permanent stormwater management facilities, house construction, and lot improvements as approved by the township engineer. Eight requires the applicant to prepare and submit a proposed homeowners declaration, which shall be satisfactory in township in all respects and must include a plan for the future maintenance, repair, and replacement of the bridge culvert. Nine requires prior to the issuance of a building permit for each lot, the applicant pay a transportation impact in Principal Chapter 37. Seventy, ten requires that the deed for each of the lots include a prohibition of further subdivisions. Eleven requires the applicant to execute the standard township agreements for financial security and for improvements. Twelve requires the applicant to obtain all necessary outside agency permits. Thirteen requires execution and recordation with the final plan, a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement. Fourteen requires the applicant to reimburse the township for all costs, fees, and expenses that the township expended in the reviewing approval. Fifteen requires that all the conditions be complied with to the satisfaction of the board supervisors. I will state that I had a previous conversation with Mr. Fisher, who represents the applicant, and he indicates that the applicant objects to Condition 10, which is the prohibition of further subdivision. I indicated and I will tell the board that this is not something we can require. We can include that as a condition if the applicant more or less agrees to. There's one additional issue. Township subdivision of land development ordinance requires that all subdividers pay a fee due of providing active recreational space. I did not include that condition, because I thought it's something the board might discuss. I think that, and Nate's here and he can speak for himself, he brought this up in his review letter. And I think the applicant suggested that they're rather large lots, passive recreational space properties, and perhaps the fee.
Does the board have any questions on this?
What would be the fee in lieu? Has anyone calculated that fee?
It's set by resolution, and it's per unit. And off the top of my head, I don't know what the amount is.
I want to say it's in the hundreds, not thousands, if I, off the top of my head, but I didn't calculate it either.
Not a whole lot.
I don't believe so, but Luke probably can pull it up quickly, as he typically would do.
It's a set amount. In other words, it doesn't require, it's per lot. But it doesn't really require a calculation. It's supposed to be set by resolution.
I'm confused as to... It's set so that... The purpose is to have recreation that's off property for smaller properties.
Correct. The purpose of it is to help...
But it's for the public, so... They're not letting the public come on their property to recreate.
It's to help defer the cost the township incurs to divide your township, for example. Active recreational.
If the board opts to waive that, the recreation would be the view shed.
For hiking through the woods.
Well, yeah, you're not going to hike through private property unless...
Oh, no. That's correct.
I mean, if Connor and Jamie opt to go along with the no further subdivision, then, you know, we may be able to discuss that fee in lieu.
Yeah, and if I could chime in real quick, guys. It's not a fee to compensate for constructed playgrounds and facilities in the township. It's a fee to, it's a code section to address the proposed residence. So again, the applicant's position that they've got open space on their property to serve the proposed residence, they feel they satisfy that. So it's not even necessarily a waiver per se, as much as they feel that they comply by having significant acreage on their property to address their residence, the proposed residence.
If it stays that way.
Sure.
Which is what Francis was alluding to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, you know... And, you know, we understand it's a voluntary, because number 10 is not truly enforceable as it's stated in here. But it's something, you know, if we could talk, have the conversation with Connor and Jamie and, you know, see where they're laying, that's all.
Good evening. Jay Fisher, I'm here on behalf of Connor and Jamie, or the applicants. I think that's something that could be resolved between preliminary and final plan. So I don't know that that needs to be addressed tonight. There are two other items that I had not talked with Mr. Esti about that I want to bring up.
But before we go to that, I would tell the board that once you grant preliminary approval, you can't impose additional conditions. So to say it'll be worked out between preliminary and final, only if the applicant agrees to it. We can't impose, in other words, we can't between now and final decide, oh, we decided to impose the fee in lieu of those places.
I think...
You can't be allowed to do that.
The applicant would agree that you can put that on as a condition for preliminary approval, and then it's something that could be discussed. And ultimately, you decide whether you're going to waive it or not before final plan's approved. That's the way I was suggesting that we address it. I'm sorry.
It would be added to this resolution?
Yes, for now. So in number five, there, the second half of that sentence and an accurate count of the number of trees to be removed. Let me give you just a little bit of background. I think you guys have seen this plan before, but this is a nearly 22-acre site. And on Reed's Road, there's a creek between Reed's Road and the property, right along Reed's Road. So what they're proposing is a subdivision to create two lots, shared driveway, bridge crossing the creek. And the driveway, the difficulty here is the driveway snakes its way up the top of that hill, because the flat area where it's appropriate to build homes is at the very top. And they were this, they had to get a special exception from your zoning hearing board to put the driveway up through that area because of the slopes. And it was granted by the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board put a condition on it that they do everything they could to minimize the number of trees that have been removed. And that was really the bone of contention that resulted in multiple meetings in front of the planning commission. And Mr. Brower, their engineer, is here. He demonstrated, he produced an exhibit showing what they did and how they moved this driveway.
I'm going to cut you off, Jay. I think we're good. I think the issue was you provided that plan the night of the planning commission meeting. It's not part of the plan set. And I think you show the trees to be removed with no limited disturbance. As long as we document with the final plan, that's all this condition is really trying to address.
But my concern is the condition, the way it's written, accurate count of the number of trees. He has designated on the plan trees that are over eight inches in caliper already.
To be removed. Just the trees to be removed.
Right. So trees, to me, is too vague. Does that include saplings? Does it include little trees? We've already identified the trees that your ordinance and the planning commission requested be identified. So if you're, if it is those trees that are identified on the plan, it's merely a matter of counting it. And I don't think your ordinance requires that to be done. So we would ask that that be stricken from the resolution.
I think Nate just indicated that there is some plan that exists, but it wasn't made part of the plan set. So is it fair to say that you add to the plan set an accurate count of the number of trees to be removed of eight inches caliber or above?
I think it's two different things, Tom, because the exhibit that was presented at the planning commission is different than the plan. The plan...
You show in the number of trees. I guess the question is, is it stripped of what the plan is?
Because you're showing trees that are over what size? Can you call?
Are you talking total trees for just the roadway or for the house build as well?
Guys, I think we're over-complicating this issue. Again, I think the planning commission's concern was, Jay, that night, was that there was information being, they were receiving that night that they felt was not provided previously. Their concern was that this information get clearly put on the plans. There's no confusion about the number of trees to be removed. Adam's already got it documented. But again, the math, where they're at, and if you look at the code, I believe the code specifies six inches or larger. I think that's what Adam's probably done. So, I mean, we're there. It's just a matter of just making sure we get that on the final plan. So I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill.
Well, but this says trees. It doesn't say trees six inches or above.
The code does.
What?
The code says trees six inches or greater.
I know, but the resolution doesn't.
At the cal, six inches is greater than...
And I would confer that anything else is a sapling, anyway.
All right. And the, this... And the, this, the restriction on further subdivision was brought up by the zoning, at the zoning hearing board, and the zoning hearing board declined to put that restriction on it. The reality here is that there's, first of all, I don't think that, as Tom has indicated, the township can't require them to put a restriction on it. If they would, wanted to subdivide this property further, we're talking about 22 acres, they would have to come back in front of the township and file a subdivision plan. So, at that point, they're going to have to comply with all the ordinances. So, I don't understand why the planning commission then decided that it thought it needed that restriction, but, so.
I would say for this present plan, and leave it at that, that it can't be something-
Are you limited to three homes on a private road still?
Yes.
So, you could only have one additional lot.
Well, I think that, and the reason for the concern is because it's an extremely steep site and has a lot of environmental concerns and stormwater management concerns. That's the reason for it.
Hence, if they, if somebody came back in in the future with a subdivision plan, they would have to address all those things.
But I see they'd have to get a variance to build the steep slopes, which they're not going to get.
Right, exactly. So.
So, we can, as far as I'm concerned-
Yes, I don't, I don't have a problem striking 10 completely.
They did get a variance to go through the steep slope with the driveway.
Correct.
Though, I mean, it's not possible, because it's-
But we're not-
That was to get up to a place, though, where there, that's the only place on the site that's not steep. They'd have to get a variance to build a house in the very steep slopes.
The last one is number 11, and I just want to get clarification on that, because that's something that wasn't discussed at the planning commission. There are no public facilities being proposed as part of this land development plan, and your other requirement, which they're in agreement with, is to have a document that clearly outlines who is going to be responsible for maintaining the improvements that the township is concerned about, which is the bridge or primarily the stormwater management facilities. And if those are not put in, they're not going to get a U and O. So, I'm just not sure. Normally, this would be something that's going to be dedicated to the township, but-
Practice of the township is to require financial security, common improvements, as permitted by the rest of the planning. Township requires this of all developers, always has, as far as I know.
I don't think it's always been done in such a small-
The common improvement's the bridge, right?
Drive, and the driveway.
And driveway and stormwater management.
Common to both these properties, yes.
Yeah.
So, I would recommend that number 11 remain.
And the only other issue with that is, what if one homeowner doesn't have the money to maintain the road, and the other one would have to foot the bill for the road or the driveway?
That's further into-
This doesn't address that, because all this does is provide financial security to make sure that those facilities are built according to the plan, and then after, after the building permits, and it's all approved, all the constructions approved, it's not the township's responsibility to make-
Number 13 addresses that, future maintenance.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, what I heard is, we'll amend condition five to include the phrase after trees, six inches or greater in caliper, and we will also add an additional condition, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of providing active recreational areas. In accordance with section 350-50 of the township code, no credit shall be provided for the passive open space, and note shall be placed on the final plan specifying the amount of the fee in lieu of active recreational area, which in fact is, township resolution, $1,000 per dwelling, per new dwelling.
And are we striking 10, or are we going to change that?
Well, that's up to the board, as I indicated. If the applicant doesn't agree to that, we can't impose it, but we could impose it, and the applicant would have to take an appeal.
I don't understand.
My recommendation is that we strike it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm okay with those, Jay.
Just you?
I'm okay.
Still moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment on non-agenda items.
My name's Alex Murda. I live on 1590 Callan Meeting House Road. I work for the Downington-
One second. We're going to take a two-minute recess-
Okay.
And then, we're going to start fresh with you.
Sounds good.
All right, Alex, one more time, sorry.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Alex Murda. I live on 1590 Callan Meeting House Road. I work for Downingtown Area School District Facilities Department as the plumber. I've been a part of the fabric of East Burnham Township for almost my whole life, and I love living in this township and community. I'm here in regards to a structure that was installed on my property. The permit was declined due to the location of the structure, and I would like to request a variance. I'm using the structure to protect my firewood from the weather. The current location of the structure is going to be convenient and safer to access than any other spot on my property. I would also like to point out that this is an open front structure with no windows or doors. No electric is to be installed as well. It sits 36 feet from the front lot line. It sits close to the same distance off the front lot line as my house does. Before it was installed, there was a woodpile in the same location of the same size. I was only trying to make it look prettier for the community by installing this structure. I keep a well-maintained property for myself and the community. I spent a decent amount of money on this structure. I dug out six inches of rocks and topsoil. As you guys know, it's probably, it's difficult digging through this soil. Leveled eight inches of stone for the structure to have a sound base. I also pruned the trees back. I have a great relationship with my neighbors. I've had many compliments on the structure. I would never want to be a bad neighbor or a poor community member. The last thing I want to do is to move the structure and relocate all of the leveled stone. It means a lot to me to keep the structure in the existing location for those reasons. If the board would reconsider and grant me and my family a variance, it would save me a major inconvenience. And I have pictures.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just pose a couple of questions. I am so sorry, I'm unfamiliar with a lot of the details, so I'm going to just ask a few questions.
Sure.
Did, was the determination that it was a shed that was built without a permit? Or was it a, was it called some, like a building, or just a shed?
I thought I remember access-
On the-
Okay, so, the reason this is important is because sheds are zoning-only permits, whereas other structures, like detached garages or barns, would also have a building permit associated with them. So, I'm curious as to what the codes official said in his letter. The location of a shed or the location of an outbuilding?
Can you speak up?
I like to work. It has two front yards, so are they in the-
I mean, if you call it a playhouse and put a sign on there saying, "Playhouse," and put a bicycle in it, then it's done.
I can do that.
This thing's over. Paint some flowers on it and say, "Playhouse."
I could definitely do that.
No, I had gotten a phone call from another resident asking me if I could hear Alex's situation, and I drove by, looked at the situation, and I agreed 100%. To me, it's a firewood storage facility. I would rather look at this than I would go look at a stack of firewood sitting there. That was the first thing. The second thing is, I believe the code says 50 feet to any accessory dwelling or shed. I don't even think his house is 50 feet off of the road. So, we're going to ask him to move his house next. So, anyhow, I personally didn't have a problem with it. I wanted him to come here and get the board's input on this. It sits just, from this picture, it sits just around that second tree in the driveway photo that you can see.
Correct.
Best way to describe from what I saw. Am I right there?
Yep, on the side of that tree.
Yes. So, anyway, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I had no issues with it, but I wanted to, you know, give him some guidance.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I keep-
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that we're having the right conversation about the necessary relief, and I certainly agree, it's a handsome structure, but I want to fully understand what relief, if any, you would be seeking. It sounds like it's a shed that isn't compliant with our zoning code. In the letter, did it advise that relief would come from the township's zoning hearing board?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay. So, it isn't uncommon for individuals who are seeking a variance to seek support of the board of supervisors. But as we continue in this dialogue, I just want to establish that this board isn't the party that would give you the relief that you seek. That would be the township's zoning hearing board. And so, with that introduction, I'll step aside, we can ask questions, but-
That's, that's a judicial board. It's separate from the township. They work independently, and I guess my thoughts are, is this even necessary? And we'll have to lean on Tom's expertise for this, and as I suggested, and it's probably, I'm bad and I shouldn't be suggesting things like that, if you hang a sign on there and say, "Playhouse," you don't have to do anything. It's a playhouse.
You'd still be in the front yard. It doesn't matter what it is. It's a building in the front yard.
Right, my understanding is that's what you're asking relief from. You're not side yard encroaching, are you?
Uh, yeah.
There's a front yard here, and a front yard here, and there's a side yard over there, starting, there's no side-
Have you applied to the zoning hearing?
No, I wanted him to come here first, because as we've done with numerous situations, we've given our recommendation, and then you would go to the zoning hearing board, and then, obviously, we can't tell them what to do, but we can give our feedback to your situation.
We can support you or not.
Correct. And due to the circumstances of what you had, I feel this situation is definitely for us to weigh in on, for them to hear. What kind of foundation do you have? Is it just on pressure?
Stone.
It's like a typical shed.
Well, it's sitting on gravel.
Right, well, that's what the sheds on. Right, I know, that's just gravel. I just want to make sure, so it's portable theoretically.
Yeah, it's-
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you?
Yes, yeah, I did. They told me to fill out an appeal form. Yes, which we have, yeah. Okay. Okay, so bring it to you.
Which, which road is Callan Meeting House, the one? Yeah, so this, this is Callan Meeting House.
Oh, this is Callan Meeting House.
Zen Road comes up on the right.
What road's this?
That's another driveway.
Okay.
We're right on the corner.
I'm trying to figure out how he has two front yards.
This is a front yard, and that's a front yard, because the zoning ordinance says any yard that abuts a street is a front yard.
Yes, yeah, on the side, yeah, and the back.
So, the shed-
So, he's only, there's only one street there. Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. This is here, here. Okay. I mean, in the neighborhood I live in, we have many homes with two front yards, and when a complaint came up eons ago, 30 years ago, about something in a front yard, the determination, quite frankly, by the township was, where's the post office consider your front yard? That's 30 years ago. It's where they tell you to put the mailbox. You don't get to choose which your front yard is, so it was ruled that-
I apologize for being so ignorant. I had no time to prep myself on this case.
I just wanted you to get in here, get the second opinion on this, and then have something to go to the zoning hearing.
Yeah.
So, where's the shed actually located? Up here? It's located right here. So, why isn't anything behind there not a front yard? Your front yard is only there and there. Is that your house with the red dot on it?
No.
Uh, that is-
The white car in front?
Yes, that is my house, yes.
I think she's got the wrong house. I think she's looking at the one in Zen and Callan Meeting, because that has two front yards.
Yeah, I don't see two front yards.
That could be. I was confused about the two front yards.
If I may, I would like to mark the approximate location of the structure. Is the white dot in the right spot?
I'm sorry?
I would say the white dot, yeah, with, from what I can tell, the white dot would-
Man, that's pretty darned close, yeah.
Okay.
Technically, the front yard.
Well, we-
Front yard ends at where the house begins. Can we just give the-
Well, this is, this is, I definitely need more time to do more research and talk to the parties involved. I just wanted to be clear with you that if it is not allowed under the zoning, you could seek a variance, and it would be appropriate to ask the board if they supported your application.
Okay.
But it is the zoning hearing board that makes the decision. And I'd also advise you, just because I frequently hear from parties that go to the zoning hearing board and a little surprised by the format, that it functions a little bit like a courtroom. So, there's evidence, and there's opportunities for your neighbors to speak.
True.
And so, without, without speaking for additional investment in the property, it may be worthwhile to be represented at such a hearing. I just, I say that as a, so you're not caught off guard by the format of the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that that's, I agree that's Luke's safe answer, but I mean, they're residents, too, and at the end of the day, my recommendation would be simple. Again, hear the board's opinion on this right now. The second thing I would do is, is, you know, sit down with the board, the zoning board, and explain your situation, and in my opinion, this is de minimis. It's not a big deal, and then start that route first.
Okay. Okay. I'll just get in touch with the-
Yes.
Just the other front yard.
Well, I, again, without having done additional researches, I am initially very curious at how there's any determination there's two front yards. But even if there is only one, that point is in it.
Possibly. We can't tell. Where did the two front yards come up?
Did they misidentify the property?
I don't know.
Did you, did somebody say that was in the paperwork?
I haven't seen it.
Oh, okay.
Even so, I would just point out, it's still in the front yard.
That's exactly my point.
But once you go beyond the house siding-
You're in the front yard.
No, you're not.
Yeah, you are.
That's, well, then you have like 20 violations entirely.
Well, we'll have to cite them.
If this is the house, if this is the house, and this is the front yard, once you have it on the side, starting at a corner, that's not the front yard. That's been a determination.
It's not in front of the house.
Pardon me?
It's not in front of, like, directly in front of the house.
Right, you can't be in front of the house.
It's off to the side.
I take it you are slightly-
Please, I certainly-
Sorry, this is 1590 Callan Meeting House Road. There is no two front yard.
Right, okay, so, we are all shooting from the hip.
Okay, yeah.
And please do not misconstrue anything I say as making light of your situation, but I'm thoroughly confused.
I'm just glad that you guys are familiarized with it now.
Right, so, but if we're talking about what constitutes a front yard, whether there's a determination that it's a single one or a second, would be a line parallel to the road and along the front of your house. So, if you can, as I, as I kind of follow on the trace, this is your front yard, because it is at a point advanced towards the road from a line, an imaginary line continuing your house over. So, assuming that it's the determination that it's a shed, and it's in your front yard, and it's not allowed, that sounds about right. That said, you do have an appeals mechanism, and that's why, so I don't mean to sound too discouraging, but-
Yeah, if it's not right, then-
Forward is, is the shed in reference to your house?
Well, it says 50 feet in the verbiage of the code to accessory dwelling or a shed. However, as I stated before, I don't even think his house is 50 feet. So, if anything, we're talking, that's why I use the word de minimis, we're talking about a couple of feet difference between the house and the shed, and I think the house is going to fail that, too.
Does it line up with the house?
It's pretty darned close, or the-
And to Tom's point, it's in the front yard. So, if it's set back, what, two feet, Tom? Would that make any difference?
Well, it's whatever it takes to get to the side, but it's still have, Kyle points relative, it's still 50 feet.
Well, that may be referred to- Well, that may be referred to-
From what, the center of the road or the side of the road?
I believe it's the center of the road.
We are all dangerously winging this. Remember that the authority for interpretation of our code is the zoning officer. But if we're talking about concepts about distance from the road, generally, we're talking about a setback. And that's how close the front of a house can be to the side of the road. But I don't think that's the important issue here. Whether it's conforming or not conforming on setback, relative to where the house is, the new structure is in the front yard.
Yeah, and no one's denying that. I... It was, as I said, I use the word de minimis.
I deny that. Don't speak for me.
That would be a fair assumption.
It may be in front of the house, and then it would be.
But anyway, I don't have a problem with what I'm seeing, the structure for firewood. I have... I would rather look at that all day, every day, than a stack of firewood.
Yeah.
My recommendation, I'll ask the other board members to give their input, is to take it to the zoning hearing board and start that.
Okay, will do. All right.
What do you have to say, Cor?
Uh, I basically agree with that, but I would double-check. I would double-check on what's the front yard and what's the setback and all that before you start the zoning hearing board. There is a cost to that.
I see.
I would make sure that-
You have that expense, and then, you know, typically, you should have legal counsel, and you have that expense.
Right, so there is an expense to it.
You're going to get into it.
Yeah, it's going to be it.
Or hire Kyle. You can present your case.
By the time you spend the $2,000 to $3,000 to have the hearing, you may want to just push the shed back and-
Yeah, just, yeah.
I thought you said-
Where the playhouse? Yeah, well, all the playhouse. Tom said it's still in the front yard, but you can still push it back.
All right, we'll start that one.
That sounds good. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're going to have to figure out your cost and all that.
Yeah.
Determine whether it's worth just having it.
Yeah.
No, but they're not 10 feet.
All right, good luck with everything.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Hang some bicycles on it.
It's in the front yard. So, county township, you can put it directly in the center of your front yard?
We don't want to be calling it third.
Here is somewhat of a typical-
Any other public comment for non-agenda items? Being none, notice is there was an executive session held prior to this meeting. Which day did we run? There was no, sorry.
There was no.
There was, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move the adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.